One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Just, uh, note for the record, the meeting was called over at seven oh seven P M.
Second.
Paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Attentions?
Approval of the next one. Tell them.
All in paper?
Aye.
Attentions? So, first, with, uh, the previous news over the weekend, um, so just, uh, I was appointed in late May. I did not file the oath, so at the, at the time, um, so had a challenge been issued to a vacancy in the clerk treasurer's seat. So, so I then filed, so it created a question hanging, conferred last week with the question of done, you know, whether doing that necessitated a reappointment from the court.
Who decided? I'm sorry.
The lead document, so decided that that was proper, so I was reappointed, uh, we filed amended documentation on sub three, you want to take a look at those, uh, embarrassment on, uh, missing, won't happen again, but it's that the sub three was the only document that had to be filed, and I told you that when it was right now is wrong, and that's, hopefully that leads to that.
The twenty is right and you're wrong, that's fine?
Yeah, it's a common, it's a common occurrence, so as of right now, uh, the timing on the vacancy is closed, um, so there's nothing. Any questions on that? With that, that leads to two things, right, one is to put the oath onto the sub three. That did, it automatically took an instructions on what to do. When you're appointed, you're putting the oath on the sub three, so that it's one document that needs to be filed on. The other thing that we're gonna do independently is the, uh, states cannot lower the salary for the clerk treasurer in, in the year treasurer coming in that we've gone in in the last, cannot legally be breached now. I think for two reasons, you know, we wanted to always have parity with the department heads, the clerk treasurer and the department heads are on an equal footing, you know, or, or equals, um, I think that was the clerk treasurer's salary. I meant to you publicly that you not raise the clerk treasurer's salary again, uh, as of by years, uh, a number that's it's exceedingly high, uh, especially when you compare it to, you might compare it to, you know, the department heads. So, the other thing that I'm working on with Senator Paul is going to so that by mutual agreement, we can lower, what we're gonna propose is that only, what we're gonna propose is that only the current clerk treasurer for a defined period not to go on, on setting up a lower, uh, for the next clerk treasurer, uh, for the next clerk treasurer back to what the previous floor was. But we're gonna propose that by mutual agreement, we can have that back to what the previous floor was, but we're gonna propose that by mutual agreement, we can have that conversation, conversation dated on kind of what that looks like, um, questions on that? Things, bond worksheet, as you signed last year, that is in the, so that is worksheet. The lien, the one drive, liens, I think, in there, and the document is in there. So, first one, we've been working on this week, uh, is the entrance, uh, we did a quick calculation on, um, hourly wage, it's a fifty dollar ticket, so that gets filed at the recorder's office, and then they add, I think, I think, they, some properties. I can go file this tomorrow, but I'm anticipating that he's gonna have to mow the grass again next week. Do you want me to do it monthly? Do you want me to do it quarterly? It's up to, it's, you know, by code, it's, it's in your direction how often I go file meetings.
Is there a speed of file?
There's, there.
Well, not for a government fee there, should be.
Yeah, that's why they add the, that's why they add the fee to the lien, it goes to the, and it goes to the person who's getting the lien.
So, if we do it with each incident, it's an extra fee?
For, yeah, for the, for the person.
What's the process to let someone know that this is gonna happen?
So, they, he was already notified that the lien was pending with the ticket, that this is the potential, right, this is, this is your fee, this is what happens if you don't pay it, we're gonna come mow it, and we're gonna put a lien on.
Mm-hmm.
So, they get notified then, I guess, via the
Certified tax.
Yeah, so when, when the violation ticket goes out, it gets sent certified mail, regular mail, and that's all spelled out, the days, times.
And then if, once you place a lien, are they notified by the county then, they'll read some receipts?
Yes, so they, they find out the same way they find out that they have a delinquent tax issue. And then, once they pay it, we are notified that it's been paid, and then we have to go release the, that, the lien.
I, I feel like in this instance, you should do it so they're notified, otherwise it would be double on this particular home, if you're thinking you're gonna mow it again.
I think, I, I mean, I have to, I have to assume that the, that he's gonna let it go again, it's gonna, we all saw it, so.
Well, and if the violation letter went out for a certain amount, I guess there would be a second one. I, I feel like maybe monthly. There we go.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'm gonna get appointed to file liens in the first week of every month that were accumulated in the previous month, and that way I can update you at the council meeting.
Do you want that in a motion?
So, the files on the one drive that we can access to see how many times you've gone?
Yes.
On the shared drive that we all have?
Yes.
And it'll say that you went to mow, and then it'll have the date when you, when you submitted.
It's there.
Okay. Paper, so I'll take that today.
That works, we'll give you a motion, that actually is your direction. Okay. Appropriations transfer. We did this last, um, we approved this already, you had the wrong date on it, and you all signed it for September the tenth, because we prepped it for this meeting, not for the special meeting where it was adopted.
Oh, in the twentieth?
Yes.
So, it was approved at the special meeting on the twenty eighth?
Yes, but it's dated.
But it's dated, so, I mean, you could do one of these things, you could recreate it with the correct date, have that document signed, or you can approve it again and have, have that signed again, because I don't feel comfortable having them post-date, uh, ordinance approval. Because when it was signed, they were through, it wasn't that day.
I will create a new document with the August twenty eighth date, it'll be on the, uh, tape one there, please come in and sign when you can.
Okay.
Okay. Last thing, I'm sorry, I got so much, unsafe building ordinance. So, in going through and looking at this, I kind of found a little tiny blurb in the building code, in town code, that says the unsafe building fund, but shall be created. Very short, super brief, um, so I'm gonna go in, I can create the unsafe building fund now, it's not, it was ever created. It's been over two years since it was approved to be created, so I can do it now that we have that, but the new ordinance that I crafted that Clay reviewed adds some detail to the entire process, so I have it. I'm gonna, I, I can pass it around to you guys, what we need to do is, um, our public notice that we're gonna go through and talk about this if you want to. Uh, first reading will be the first reading for the budget, which we're gonna talk about next, uh, or, or later. And then, second would be the adoption, which we could do at the October eighth council meeting, so give that a read, um, and then you guys can decide on what you wanna do in terms of that.
So, you want us to read this right now and answer it right now?
No, I want you to read it and, and
Can you email it to us?
Right, it's okay, that's the, that's, I, I don't, I mean, I was trying to make sure that everything.
Yeah, it's, it's Yeah, no, yeah, uh-huh, so yeah, I mean, it's, it's crafted based on
I'll have to email.
We can email it to us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email it to you guys, when we can talk about it. As it is, we're gonna create unsafe building fund immediately, because we can, and then we can go through and, and kind of codify the process after using this ordinance.
Okay.
Okay? That's it for me.
There's a long agenda to do. Oh, I did not, I checkmarked it. Sorry, I'm moving on. Counsel.
I do not have anything. I, uh, have, the cell tower has reached out to me again, their representative, about the change that I had discussed with you all about them increasing the property size and reducing the, um, increase annually. Uh, I have repeatedly asked for dimensions and/or a drawing of what they, where and how they're wanting to increase that, and they have not given that yet, so I explained to her that until we have that, I don't think we would consider it. Because it is, where it's at, it's a little bit tricky, if it comes out, it could, you know, so I said we need to go a little more detail about it.
Senator, will the commissioner be involved in this council tone or just you?
Not yet.
Okay.
We don't have anything to look at yet, so.
And videos? I don't know what to do, so. Play your tape, sorry.
So, last week, uh, Joe in the building department received a request for records from a lady that out in Fort Eugene, Oregon, asking for documents related to the occupancy use of spaces at Bethlehem Steel Facility at eleven Deer Hill Drive from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen eighty-five. So, I provided the initial response to her to say that we would look, but she was asking for this, so we don't have to create. And so, tonight, Joe has given me this folder of documents that I haven't had a chance to look at, that he feels are responsive. So, my question to you is, do you want my staff to scan this and be able to view for that staff time? Or do you want building department staff, and he, Joe indicates to me, if they'll explain further, I guess their machine can only take photos, but Nick's machine up here can actually scan and make these into a PDF, which would be
Okay, you guys can bring it up here and do it.
So, if you can essentially authorize him to have staff use that machine, that can either be put on a thumb drive, I can get it next week, put up here, or do you want to email it? Um.
Or just, do you want me to do it?
Um.
How about, is there a way that we can show him so he can do it, if you guys are busy in the future, like, show him how to do it?
Come, come by tomorrow, we'll do it together, I don't know how you do it.
You will need a thumb drive though.
Yeah.
To put it, it'll, you put it into the machine, and that's where it'll send the file.
We have a couple, yeah, and I can get it on, you can email.
So, you're gonna email or just put it on a thumb drive and update it up here next week?
That's fine.
As long as we, on the last item, appoint a sanitation board member, maybe next week, it'll be here, it's already a meeting, it's not canceled. So, I'm gonna get it.
Other than that?
I like a little bit more.
I don't think.
And it's only got one applicant.
We'll do, we'll do it tomorrow.
All right, Neil is not here, and I did not receive an email, an update.
Great, someone's here. Okay, I have two items, they're both, uh, C C M G related, which is, as you know, the paving grant. The first one is regarding the two thousand twenty-four dash two C C M G, which is the one that we just finished up this year. Um, I have three items, and it's up to you if you wanna take care of them now or do them where they should, okay. Um, those three items, so the, the project is complete, the contractor did come back out and reseed areas, because I know they had initially seeded during the hot, dry weather, um, and I, I believe that the town put out, like, I noticed on Facebook, you know, it was just reseeded, you know, watered. So, the project, um, is complete, so there's the, of the three items, there's the retainage invoice to be paid. Um, I don't have that in front of me, but I know it was like sixty-five thousand dollars and some change, I think we probably have that.
Sixty-five oh fifty-five and eighty-two cents.
Great. Um, so that's one item, and then the other two, there's two documents, one is called a certificate of substantial completion. Um, that is typically, uh, the date that's decided on that is when all the paving was done, maybe we had like some punchable items, which was reseed. So, um, the substantial completion date was the date I did a walkthrough with the contractor regarding, um, the roads, and that was August first. It's just that I didn't get it in front of you, just signed officially. And then, I forget the, um, I think the subs, the final completion date was when he told me he finished the seeding, I think I put on there like August twenty-ninth. So, those just, those two just need signatures to be filed. Um, so let's go back to the, um, retainage invoice, um, this project did come in slightly over budget by one point two percent. Um, the bid amount on this project was six hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifteen cents, and it came in at six hundred and fifty thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. That is seven thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars and two cents over. And there's two reasons for, for the overage, um, one, we did a lot of extra sidewalk work. Uh, we did go through, uh, the subdivisions where we found over a half inch of, uh, you know, settlement between the panels of sidewalk, and did a lot of spot replacements. Um, the other reason for the overage which came in at the end is that when, on the streets that were just milled down an inch and a half, um, there were times where the mill machine would actually pull up chunks, um, and they call those scabs. So, when it came time to actually put the surface layer back down, it was a little bit uneven in places. And the reason for those scabs is the developer, developer who put the roads in initially, when they put in their surface cores, they might not have put in an inch and a half, they might have put in like an inch and three quarters, so that that slight difference of material, when the machine would grab it, it would just kind of break off some chunks. So, again, those are the two reasons.
Would we not know, sorry, would we not know if, uh, like, if it was an inch and a half and they didn't do that much, or if it was supposed to be that? Then why wasn't it that?
You mean the developer asked number years ago?
Yes.
Um, I think you could find that out by coring the road and seeing, because like a cer, the surface course has a finer aggregate in it usually, and then the, the intermediate course has slightly larger, uh, particles in it, so you can see it. You know, you could take a couple of cores and then you could get an idea, is this really one point eight inches?
Is that not something at the time of development that was checked? Or is that not something that you could not, you can't check it without
You'd have to core, you have to, you have to core the road, so you have to go, I mean, you can check it, you can get it, it it, it wasn't a very large overage, again, think about one point two percent.
I don't like any overage.
Okay, well, but, and, I, I mean, I understand, I understand.
I mean, the road was put in at that time, their machine tore it up, we're gonna pay for it.
Well.
I just wanna make sure that I have all the answers to all of them, how did it happen, why did it happen?
Right.
To understand, to try and understand that, you know, that was a long time ago, subtle change, things changed, but I don't like, so I just wanna make sure I'm understanding how that's, how the overage is.
That is, that is a good question, and I would say maybe, um, let me see, if I remember your town's standards, they are two and a half inches of the base asphalt, and then an inch and a half of the surface asphalt. In, on a local road, I think your collector's streets are, don't quote me, but I think your collector's streets are three inches or two inches. I might be wrong about that. So, the developer should have put them in, in these subdivision streets, should have been put in at two and a half inches and an inch and a half. To go back and say, what did they actually do? Do you go core the street, you know, I mean, when are we gonna run into this again? Besides, that surface course is gone now, they just milled it off, so it's it might be a little bit difficult if you're gonna say, I'm gonna go talk to this developer and say, hey, you did this, but I'm just kind of explaining what we saw out in the field. Um, and I do remember seeing this before, maybe last year, um, in the village, I saw that a lot too. Like, we would, um, mill it off, and there was still asphalt down there, but again, it was like, like little mini pop holes, you know, which, which, um, isn't a problem for paving into it, it's just that you go slightly over on material. Um, so to make you feel, also to make you feel a little bit better about being seven thousand dollars over this year, last year, you were twenty thousand dollars under.
Wait, so that money we sent back, can they give us the seven back? Can they give it back to us, so they can cover the overage?
But that's, well, you did send money back to end up, but when I'm saying you're twenty thousand dollars under, you were twenty thousand dollars under on your portion. So, whatever you allocated to last year, you underspent twenty thousand dollars of your own money, and the year before, in two thousand twenty-two, just to try
That's great, I love underspending, I love underspending, then we can do other projects, other things, overage, mm, don't like it. Get it, don't like it.
Oh, so, I don't know, if you have any other questions about this year's C C M G that I can answer, and I don't know if you wanna, you know, vote on the invoice, if you want me to keep talking, or if you want me to pause on that, because I wanted to talk about, now again, there's C C M G.
So, I guess we'll just start, you do this one first.
I just have one question, in the process that you spoke about, when these roads were originally put in by the developer, when it's finally signed off on, is that inspected by our town engineer, or is there any inspections done on that to confirm that the gravel is underneath there, and the pavement is the right thickness, and is there any, is there a procedure set in this town that is looked at, when, sort of, we can say, yes, when the developer came for pavement, that the roads are completed? We've got that going on with Putman right now in the other area, is there an inspection that's done, or is there a requirement?
I don't have your town code memorized, but I know from our end
What?
Ouch. Um, I know for Putman that we did proof roll, um, there, uh, once they put the stone down, we witnessed a proof roll.
I remember some of that.
So, we did inspect from that part, but, um, I don't think from our office side that we were there watching them lay the asphalt. Um, but, again, the proof roll out in Putman was pretty extensive, I mean, they had to do a lot of fixes out there, so we were, we were on, on them for the integrity of the road base, um.
So, according to what you're saying to me right now, or to the council, is that there is no, in our ordinances, there is nothing specific that states that this, after our developer does the streets, that we have the right to inspect them before paying their bill?
You're not paying
You have the right to inspect.
Yeah.
Okay, but I mean, there is nothing that says it had to be inspected?
Well, again, I don't have your code memorized, so I don't think I can answer that question right now.
All right, thank you.
All right, so
Just one question.
Yes.
I just, I have one question for you. So, my, my house has two ramps, could I corner by?
Hmm.
Both of my ramps were torn out.
Mm-hmm.
One of them was replaced exactly as it was before it was torn out. They did nothing to the sidewalk, so they came in, they tore the ramp out and repoured it, and ruined my grass. But I'm really concerned with, why, why was the ramp torn out and repaved that didn't, where, where the sidewalk wasn't changed? So, the slope from the sidewalk to the curb was unchanged, it was torn out and replaced at the exact same spec. Why did that happen, and it happened numerous times in my name?
That is a good question, and I believe I have an answer for you, is that this job is at N dot, uh, standards, and N dot's, um, ADA ramp standards say that that detectable warning surface can't be any farther away than two inches from where it's, uh, where the flat area, because, you know, some of the racks, like, the, the curb goes up an angle, but where the curb is, where the, uh, the where the dis, where the wheelchair or walker is supposed to go across, that detectable warning surface can't be farther away than two inches. And I went out there and measured a lot of them, and there were four, five, so, you know, there were some wide gaps. So, we made, so we made, look, I get your, what you're saying, i- i- if it went in at the same slope, it means that slope was okay, but it's detectable warning surface wasn't okay.
Makes sense. One, one more question.
Okay.
Feels like, when I'm walking through the neighborhood, some of the slopes on the adjusted sidewalks, so when they went in and took the ramp, but they also took a couple sections of sidewalk, the slope of the dip now in the sidewalk is more of a hazard than the slope of the ramp ever was. How can it, how can it matter so much that the slope of the ramp has to be, whatever the angle it is, but the dip on the sidewalk is now more than the slope of the original ramp? Why is that?
That is a nuanced question, and I can only speculate that the ramp is sending a person out into traffic. So, it could be that the maximum slope allowed on a ramp is more restrictive than just the longitudinal sidewalk, which is following the street. But I could dive into that a little bit more, but that is my off
That's up to that, I can, I can
That's off, that's, that's my off-the-cuff, uh, answer, um.
I don't have the town code memorized either, but I do have an access. So, town code fourteen dash four dash one, okay, fourteen four one. And that is subdivision control ordinance, so with regards to streets, the street shall be graded surface and approved to the dimension required by such plans, profiles, and cross-sections of the work shall be performed in the manner prescribed in standard specification for road and bridge construction and maintenance of the State Highway Commission in Indiana. And then it goes on to say, inspection of the construction of all roads shall be made at least by one of the following people, the town street superintendent, town engineer, or town building commissioner. Three inspections shall be made after the base is in place, after the two-inch binder course is in place, and after the one-inch surface course is in place. Acceptance of the roads and improvements by the commission requires a letter of recommendation signed by, signed by the town street superintendent to the commission, and subsequent notification of the council by the commission that all roads and improvements have been completed in accordance with the requirements of these ordinance.
So, if it was signed off on, then we would expect that it was done correctly, so what else, over time, could have caused that issue aside, and could it be an equipment issue, could there, could the equipment have caused those problems?
Or, that's not my initial thought, but
Or was it done, like, the roads were done, but
Not done, sorry.
Never signed off on, we don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, assuming that we
Yeah, assuming we did it correctly, what else would cause those problems, and just, you know, and I get that it's done, and it's over with, and it's been built, and it's gone, and it's not there, but just to, you know, to is there a connecting road that we're gonna, is on the next list, you know, that's been in that same, you know, in the same development that we're gonna run into those same problems because it wasn't all done, you know, seven thousand dollars this time, but next time it could be seventeen thousand, you know, if it's, if it's worse, so how do you, how do we go about making sure that it's not a bigger problem?
I would, I would think about maybe coring the road, I think the cores are usually about that big in diameter, and then they can just get filled back in, and then you have a better idea of, of what was put down. And it could be that And it could be that when they were put in, and if, I don't think he ran off an inch, but I, I think for, I think it's an inch and a half for local roads. Um, it could be that it was as simple as, you know, they put in the right base, and when it was time to do the top course, they put in one point eight inches, you know? And maybe the person inspecting it at the time was like, oh, that's good, you know? So it, it's kind of hard to say what would have happened, you know, whatever, I'm just thinking fifteen years ago, uh, when the subdivision was put in. But it's a good question. You wanna be, you wanna have a better idea, because this is the first time I know that I've been doing your CCMG to actually run, not run into this, because again, I saw it last year on, um, out in the village. But we were more under last year, so it's a very good question, something to, to look out for in the future for sure.
So are you suggesting then, so the, the street that's going in the village when they're all done, that we should cor it and verify? I'm just asking. Or are you suggesting Roseanne going back before we pave something else and coring it first?
I don't know.
Okay, but I guess that's what I'm saying, so we have a new road going in.
Right.
Right? So on final inspection, would we cor it and make sure it's the depth?
Where, where, where is, where is that road at right now in terms of? They don't have surface course yet, right? They have just binder course?
Right, they don't have the top layer on yet.
Yeah. So they, so, so they don't have their surface course on yet. If you go, if, if we, me or, or, or Joe go out, then at the curb line, there should be an inch and a half left.
But as Clay read, some, we do need to make sure there's a final inspection by one of the three here tonight on that street.
Yeah. And even the inspection of where it's at right now, right? Because you told to inspect them after the binder course, or it could be happening, could happen right now. But we, we, I can tell you, we definitely inspected the stone, so.
So it sounds like though someone needs to find out where they're at in terms of their process, so we can do the second and then the final inspection. Does that, you can find out, are you gonna check with them?
There's no timeframe that we got to complete that in, correct?
Well, before they move on to the next, before they- I guess find out where they are, and if we missed the middle one, but we need to get the last one.
I mean, just because we have it, what if it's wrong, and then we go, we all go from there.
Yeah, I mean, when I work it out now, if it's wrong, then it falls back on whoever's doing it.
So if Brandon is gonna check in and find out where they are.
Yeah, right.
So I guess we're looking-
So you need a, a motion?
Do you need a motion?
We need three motions. The first is motion, I need a motion to pay, uh, this invoice. PO number, PO number zero, zero, eight, zero, zero, dash, zero, zero, two, zero, one, four, six, eight, eight, eight.
Okay.
Gonna need to pay that out of MVH Street Repair. Number two, two, zero, one, zero, zero, six, three, sixteen, please.
And what is that one for?
Uh, that's in the amount of sixty-five thousand fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents, sixty-five, oh, fifty-five feet.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We just know for the minute that Councilwoman Poseck sent out-
And, and, and Councilwoman Poseck is, uh, is not in the room. Okay. Uh, so we write this down with great apologies. Okay, the second motion is for President McCarr to sign this certificate of substantial completion.
So moved. Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No, that Councilwoman Poseck is not in the room. And then the third is for President McCarr to sign this certificate of final completion approval and acceptance support.
So moved. Second. Discussion? Roll call, please. Who can you believe?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No, that Councilwoman Poseck is not in the room. Thank you.
And then, um, whenever, wherever you get those signed, um, just if you want, you can scan them in and send them back to me, so I can give it to the contractor and ask those in chat. Um, so now for the, for the next round of CCMG, um, you may or may not know, but the state changed their timing. There's only gonna be one, uh, application per year. And, um, if you want to do CCMG paving for next year, the application is due by October thirty-first. Now, um, if you decide, uh, if you decide that you wanna, you know, put money towards it, I mean, and we do have another council meeting, and we could see where the streets are left, if any. I mean, you're, we've done a lot of streets over the last few years, so point is the deadline's October thirty-first, so just let us know if there's something you want us to view for that app. It's, it opens October first, and then you have a month to, to get that in.
Do we have current pacer names for all the streets? Or would you, is that something we do in the process?
That, well, those are done, those are re-driven every two years, and I don't think they're supposed to be re-driven this year, but what we do is then take the spreadsheet and then update it for the ones who were just paid this year. So we, we just-
Okay, so you'll update?
Yes, and then you'll be able to see your average rating and, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Brandon, if you want, we could sit and chat about that, because, um, Shem also sent me some information that if the average of our streets are like a six or above, we can use our own money for other things. Where it's, I'd have to read it some more, but where now it's like designated just for streets, we might be able to use it for other projects.
Could you just keep in mind if the park will, when you want to consider? Thank you.
So that'd be something like parking lots?
Maybe, but let's, let's, maybe, let's schedule some time and we can chat. But I have that, I'll send you the thing that, um, Shem said has a little more. So maybe, um, Brandon and I, if we can meet before the next time, we can report something on CCMG for next year.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you guys. Next, you have my report.
Good job. Thank you.
All right, Billy Crusher.
Joe?
I got a, uh, email from, uh, Mr. Hen, from Henning's Sons. And, uh, I asked for all of the invoices to be resubmitted and to verify any amounts owed. And I sent that to the council just now before meetings, and, uh, ten, Nick, Amanda, and well, good afternoon, here are copies of all the paid invoices. They are paid in full with nothing more owed to us. Thank you for reaching out to make sure. We appreciate it. And they're all stamped paid with the dates that they were paid, so all of this communication was there. I've turned it out copy, if you guys wanna look at it. Henning's Sons.
Anything else?
Well, we're on the building department. Um, Joe had a couple of things that he's been working on. One of them was the, uh, KLLM assessment, uh, fees for twenty twenty-five. And I'd like at this point to, uh, I'm sure everybody's aware of what's been going on, there's been emails going back and forth about this all month. I'd like to make a motion that the container fees for twenty twenty-five for KLLM, the remaining balance, to be paid in full in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
So just, so you're suggesting that the BZA enforce what they said, right?
Right.
So a second for discussion.
So we got a letter from their attorney, and in the letter, he stated that, uh, twice that it would take until December thirty-first. Um, so the original check for the thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars was for three quarters of the year, till September first. So the remaining balance of twelve thousand five hundred dollars would be due if they continue to keep the allowed two hundred containers that the BZA gave them the variance for, which they still have, oh, double that. Um, and if it's gonna take them till December thirty-first, then we could pursue getting the remaining balance of those funds. And then if they, and then also January first would, would be twenty twenty-six, and those fees would be due again if the containers are still there. So rather than, uh, assess fines, which we could also do, but, um, it's just, this is just my opinion, to not try to make it so difficult and, and run good businesses out of Burns Harbor. If we stay, if we enforce the ordinance, which we, we have a right to do that, and collect the container fees, um, we can absolutely do that. And they're working on trying to get these down to two high.
Yeah, I've heard that.
Or, or in the process of doing that.
Well, I was gonna ask, 'cause this letter from their attorney, August twenty-ninth, said, on the weekend of August sixteenth, the company began reducing the height of the existing stacked containers to no more than two containers high.
Because they were four high, correct?
Yes.
Just somewhere. Today, they have restacked one hundred and eighty-seven containers to lower the stacks to no higher than two containers. That effort is ongoing, and they hope to complete that in the next few weekends. So that was August twenty-ninth, which was before the Labor Day weekend. So they've had two weekends. They have the three-day holiday weekend, and then this past weekend. So have you inspected or gone by recently to see how many are three or more high?
They, they still have a significant number of containers that are four high, but, um, they are making progress on getting that down to two high, so that-
So two things, one, we need to pay the rest of the year in their container fee.
Yes.
And then secondly, they're, they still have, they're still in violation, but they're working on it.
Yes.
I mean, I certainly think that they should pay that remaining fee for the two hundred that were approved for the year.
And then what happens, obviously, they say they are working on it, but how long are we going to give them to, I mean, they-
That's what we're, we're trying to figure out what you want us to- How, how tight do you want Joe need to turn this through, basically?
Because come January first, twenty twenty-six, we could then impose-
Well, they're gonna owe the, they're gonna owe the fee again, just for two hundred.
Yeah.
And the additional of whatever they still have on property?
Well, a fine for-
If, if they have two hundred, they'll owe fifty thousand, if my math is right.
Yes.
So we haven't even imposed fines for being over the two-
Could we send them a bill for the remaining balance? And in that, I, I mean, ask for a communication of a date and/or we would start fining them?
Can we give them a hard date of, you have to have it done by this date, or you are going to?
We can, but just to remind you all, I know I forwarded the letter, um, and it was right before the holiday weekend, but it says, their plan for removal includes the potential sale of a number of containers or a long-term lease of containers to a company that has purchased the majority of the two hundred and sixty-seven containers sold this year. The company is committed to reducing the number of containers to two hundred or less by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Even if the sale or lease do not go through, we are not able to share details of either transaction due to non-disclosure agreements with their prospective lessee and buyer.
So they should pay the remaining balance for the container fees, and January one, they should pay the fifty thousand again and start fining them for anything over two hundred, right? Because they're saying by December thirty-first, they're gonna be done? I mean, they've given us that date.
So I know that we had a motion and a second, so we're discussing, discussing that.
Right. Our second. Yeah.
And I think Jack's motion was essentially to impose the balance of the twelve five.
Of the twelve five.
But now, Tony's made-
So she is a, a-
Tony's-
I mean, or we could do two, yeah.
Yeah, so, so do you wanna have any more discussion on the-
I do. I just wanna know why we have to, why we're voting on it? Like, is it just a fine, they have to pay it? Like, why is it a special circumstance? Why, why are we voting on it?
Because it's, it's a question of large numbers of amounts of money.
But it's, but it's still fine, and you're still fining somebody according to town code.
That, that's not, the twelve five's not a fine.
That's their payment for the year. That's the fee.
If they, because tech, because technically, they're supposed to pay, was it two hundred per container, or two fifty per container?
Answer the two hundred?
No. No. Just, just for one container is two fifty. So two fifty times two hundred is fifty thousand. So they had more than two hundred, but we would kinda be saying, we'll look the other way on the violation for the more than two hundred if you pay us the two fifty per-
The remaining balance.
So we just said, pay us fifty grand for the two hundred to start, because that's what you owe. And we've held off on imposing a fine for having more than two hundred containers and having them stacked more than two high.
Okay, I, I misunderstood what Jack, what Jack had said, so.
So they've already paid-
Yeah, I thought a portion of it.
They've only paid, they paid three quarters.
And do we, do we have a motion for that? That's what, so Jack's motion is to impose the balance of the container fees that was twelve five.
And that's the remaining balance of the fifty thousand dollars from the year.
Yeah, for having, for having two hundred on January first.
I don't wanna start this, and that, that's my only question, because I don't wanna start this process where all of a sudden, every time we wanna impose a fine on somebody, we have to, you know, we have to bring to the table. If it's in the code book and it's there, but it's a fee, not a fine, then that's different.
Yeah.
I just didn't, I was another-
This twelve five is-
I was way lost, and now I'm fine.
This twelve thousand five hundred dollars is the balance of the fee for calendar year twenty twenty-five for having two hundred storage containers.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yes.
And so-
And then January first, we get them with the, another fifty thousand or whatever.
If they have, they might have a hundred ninety-nine, because there's some, you know, the hot takes. So I mean, so yeah, they would have to pay two fifty per container that they had, you know, that first would be.
However, if, if they follow what their letter says, then they will only have two hundred or less.
But that's still fifty thousand dollars.
Well, it's still fifty thousand dollars.
No, it is, but we're anticipating potential fines in January, because there'll be more.
Yeah, and the BZA already gave them the restriction of a ninety-day time frame.
Yeah, they told them that in February.
January twenty-eighth.
Yeah, January.
Okay, so it's time to-
Yeah.
Yeah, we thought by May first, they would be down to two hundred, and here we are, September tenth.
Yeah.
Do we have a count on how many they have to date?
Uh, the last letter, what was it, four hundred something that they had, they were down to, I think he said.
We know what they started with?
Uh, I'd have to look back at the, uh, records from the BZA meeting, but it was, I think somewhere over five hundred.
As of August fifteenth, the company still had four hundred and sixty-one containers on site.
Okay. And where does that number come from? Them?
Them, from their attorney, I mean. Because there's some, and if you look at an aerial, I mean, and it would be almost impossible-
I just, I just know we were wrong there.
For, for him, because they're covered up.
And they're stacked four high.
Yeah, and so-
When I had Ryan go do aerial shots over there, and I verified the numbers.
Okay.
Okay.
So did you verify the four sixty-one?
Their number are accurate.
Okay.
Well, I, I was, I just was wondering where the number came from. Okay, so Jack's motion was to impose-
The balance of the fee.
For twelve five.
Do you want December thirty for-
Twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Would, yeah, and when do you want that paid by?
I would say it's due now.
They have it.
Yeah, do a hot receipt.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call when you're ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay, so I will reach out to their attorney and tell him, pay the twelve five.
And then- And then.
And, and based on discussions at town council, um, there will be, you know, in addition to the annual fee due in January twenty twenty six, if there's more than two hundred or more than too high come January, we'll start up.
Do we have to make a motion for that or that can just be in your letter?
I think that's something that we just put in the letter and we see where we are in December, January to officially do those things because this, well, I think that we'll have to look at it. I'm not sure if those fees or those fines come from this board or from B Z A.
I feel like it comes from B Z A.
And that's, and that's what I, and B Z A doesn't need unless they have something, but of course in January, every organization, so. I think it's something we can.
Yeah, cause it'd be a violation of their variance.
Does.
Add that to the agenda for B Z A.
Does the, does the town, does town code say they can only be too high or is that a variance that they, that they have that they can actually?
That's in the variance.
That's in their variance and then, and.
And it also.
School me on how that works, like, is that like a forever thing, like they can?
So the town code does, says that you're not supposed to stack shipping containers at all.
Right.
But they were given variance to allow for that.
From the B Z A.
And is, is there limitations on that variance or is it just indefinitely they could be too high?
Too high, two, no more than two, two hundred containers.
Indefinitely they could be too high, as long as they are who they are, it could be too high.
Limitations to that requirement.
Yeah, they could have too high, two hundred, so basically they could have a hundred piles too high.
Okay, and I just supposed to make the, the difference.
And it, but it follows the property owner, not the property, correct? So if K L L M moved out and someone took over.
No, it goes with the property.
Okay, so.
Because it was originally granted, I think in two, November two thousand two.
Yeah.
Okay, so if it were to change hands and it was the same type of business, then they could continue the variance.
I believe it was two thousand two, it was a long time ago, cause X C R England or something, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's one other item that Joe's been speaking of and I just wanted to clarify and get this taken care of also, and that's Rug Doctors, or Rig Doctors, I'm sorry, not Rug Doctor, Rig Doctors, um, there's been a fine of seven thousand five hundred dollars that was issued to them. Um, there was a letter transponded, transformed to them on Tuesday, June seventeen, um, that he agreed that he would make the payments at five hundred dollars a month. There's been discussion with the council back and forth about how this can be done with, and we also talked to Nick about this. Um, what I'd like to do is make a motion that Clay draft an agreement for Ron Gonzalez of Rig Doctors to sign to begin making payments on the seventy five hundred dollars that the fine was assessed by the building commissioner.
Move, move that in, please tell us.
We, but we, we have a payment agreement plan.
We have a. And he's not paying it?
Did he just have to come in and start paying it?
Well, you, but last month, I think there was discussion about defining the process.
Correct.
But, but Clay looked at the agreement we came up with and said it was good.
Yeah.
You're off, you have it.
Yeah, they just have to come in and start paying and be started ducting.
But has he signed it?
No, he hasn't, he hasn't come in.
Yeah, so what would be done after?
So he would, that person would need to come in and see Nick and fill out the agreement.
So if he does, continues to not come in, what, could we send him certified letter or like, hey, you got like, like, what, what happens there?
Does that have to come from him? So say he doesn't come in and doesn't sign it, what do, what do, what do we do from there?
Sue him.
We couldn't send him certified mail saying.
Okay, you could do that and then he's, and then.
I got it in an email where he said he'll make payments on it, so I got it in writing from him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it sounds like just contacting him and asking him to come in and meet with Nick to sign the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Or, and if he doesn't, Clay would just be part of the mean process.
Possibly.
Okay, there you go.
And if you send my motion, here's a link for the motion.
No.
Thank you.
The only thing I'll comment, Nick, is last month, I know we discussed the process, so is it something that needed to come to the council for approval? Is it something your office was gonna take care of? So I guess that's just you need to.
Okay, I mean, we have the document.
Correct.
When the person who needs to pay comes in, they just need to sign off that this is the schedule they're gonna go with and start little checks.
Can I let them know that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, please, yeah, come in.
And then I guess at the following council meeting, just say, hey.
I'll update, I'll, I'll update you, I'll update you right away if he, if he comes in, because I'll have a huge email.
The council on. Right, oh, there you go, yeah.
We're not the marching band.
The computing device, yeah, I'll shoot you an email and update you, but I, I.
Yeah, I guess just keep us updated on his payment plan and.
If he actually shows up.
Yeah, it's just a very costly.
Brandon, street and sanitation.
I just got a couple of things, um, the bike trail sinkhole, Harvey Sutton has repaired a sinkhole. Um, there were no signs of damages from the bore crew who was working on the boring. So they replaced twelve feet of S D R thirty five pipe that was replaced and their asphalt contractor has been contacted and they should be paving soon and they will keep me updated on that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, our snowplows are currently being inspected and repaired. We've got one truck and plow done. The next one's in, um, pretty fairly cheap repairs. We're doing the, the work aluminum weld here in town. Um, so they're doing a great job. Um, our fall streets sweeping program will be coming up, so I'll be contacting Brown Equipment Company to schedule that in the next coming weeks. Um, Concrete Guys on the bike trail, I sent them another email today. The last time I talked to them was August twenty first, when I met the project manager on site and he said he would contact me in the next few days and I still have yet to hear anything. So what would you want my next steps to be? It's been a long time.
Have we, have we, uh, we approved going through?
Yeah, it was approved. I contacted them that they were awarded the bid.
And they still have it.
I told them all the specs and communications poor, I haven't heard anything, that's a big load of.
What companies is he in?
The Concrete Guys.
And is this something that we can just say, psh, next?
I mean, I can call, I can contact them one more time tomorrow and see what is going on or we can move on.
And then can we, like, take our.
What was the bid for that they're gonna do?
The amount or what the work?
No, the work.
The two concrete pads over there on the uh east side and the ADA ramp that's damaged.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you got two twelve by eight sections. Um, yeah, I just need to, need to know what you guys want me to do. Should I try to reach out one last time and get a date or should we move on and do the next guys? And they were the, I do believe they were the cheapest bid.
Yeah, their, their bid was two thousand one hundred fifty dollars and thirty nine cents. The next bid will be from Shears Concrete, which is four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, I imagine, are have, are the, do the bids have, are they expired?
Yeah, I'm sure they do, so we gotta recheck.
Yeah, we have to get new bids.
So we would be able to just.
So should I try reaching out one last time?
I said reach out one more time and then, at the next council meeting.
Yeah, and then.
If there's no, there's no progress then.
I'll give them till the end of the, maybe the end of the week and then I'll let you guys know if we can move on from there.
So just, just to clarify from the notes, he's gonna go and recheck them one more time. If he gets no response, he's gonna go ask for these companies to rebench, to rebid?
Mm-hmm.
That's where you're going?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'll do. Okay.
If we only have three though, you'll have to find a new third guy.
I'll find a third one somehow.
Yeah, don't ask them to come back.
I won't, I promise.
Okay.
Um, that's all I have for streets.
And I think I started to interrupt, but I don't know that you have to receive three, that you have to ask for three.
Yes.
It does. See, yeah.
Yeah.
No, you're good, yeah. Or show that you tried for three.
Right. And for sanitation, we had only one call out this month and it was on August thirtieth. Um, list stations four and five went to an alarm for a power failure, sent a guy out to investigate. Everything was normal, he just reset the call boxes and that was it. Everything's running fine as they, as they are. Um, so that's good. Um, we're gonna be scheduling our fall list station cleanout with Eagle Services. I contacted them and as soon as they give me some dates, they will be contacting me and we'll be getting the fall cleanout done.
Thank you.
Um, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Under sanitation, there is still the open vacancy, remember?
It's on the agenda.
Later.
And we have, um, interviews with two individuals from the clerk tomorrow evening.
Tomorrow.
The first one, um, emailed and her current job offered her to go part-time, so she is not gonna interview.
Okay.
So we have those two tomorrow night.
That's for the part-time job in sanitation.
All right.
Please, she.
Um, we're continuing with field training with Officer Nathan Bennett. He continues to excel. He's doing a good job. Um, this month, I, I think we talked about the last briefly, um, at the last meeting, but on August fifth, we had our national night out, which was, in my opinion, a, a big success, specifically because of Tony and Michelle.
Michelle.
Um.
And you guys.
Those two organized it all. I was a little hesitant on it, kind of last minute thing, but I think it went really well. I think it's something we'll probably continue to do for hopefully years to come. Um, other than that, the only real notable thing we had was the missing juvenile that we had reported at the end of the month. Um, Assistant Chief Lucas, Officer Nathan Bennett, who's still on field training, but he played a big role, um, in locating that juvenile along with.
My rights here, I gotta go.
So Anthony Catesta from Indiana State Police who works out of our office as well, he played a big role, um, in subpoenaing people like Google and other high-tech places where we were able to get the information, which led us to get the search warrant that we ended up not, not needing, but, um, it was nice to add, just if things didn't go as well as they did, so. Um, other than that, commitment to the prosecutor's office for helping us through the whole thing. Every other agency that participated, that we listed in our Facebook posts, I mean, everybody was super helpful through the whole process. So, yeah.
Thank you. Tell Nathan and Tim, do you? All right, um, Ryan is across the street. He's busy tonight.
Flying helicopters.
Right, and Ryan across the street with the helicopters that are here at training.
As we're here. Ella.
Hello, I just have a couple of things. Uh, the park and the park foundation will be hosting the Fall Fest on October eighteenth from five to eight thirty at Leakland Park. The trunker treat starts from five thirty till seven. Anyone who would like to participate in the trunker treat, please contact the park director for more details. We would like to thank the street department for all their help getting the ag line, am I saying that right? Ag line? Into the park for the ballpark. And then, um, also I wanted to let everybody know on Monday, Dave's lawn care started the sidewalks over by the new park.
It was good. We were walking back there and saw us.
Yes. And that's it, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, and RBC?
Um, we had some friends at our meeting today. We had Matt Kaiser from Alamo Marsh and we had Rafi from National Park. Um, and we got some updates on phase one A and phase one B. Everything seems to be moving along very well. Um, other than that, Brandon, I did have, I think Tina's gonna reach out to you to talk, um, again about the orange cones.
A plan for that?
Yeah, they had a talk. I think we got to reach back out to McCully's and see what, what we can, what we can get done, maybe those orange cones aren't very. And not R B C related, but I do have one other question. What happened to the flashing lights, the flashing stop signs?
Well, the original stop signs that were put on there, um, they stopped working, so we doubled up on solar panels. We talked to the company. They stopped working again, um, so they're back at the shop. I don't know what to do next. It was a pretty expensive piece of equipment.
Right. That's why I just don't want them to be sitting in the street department. We're talking about them in twenty twenty seven and they're still sitting in the street department. So are they under warranty or do we not know how?
I'll have to see. That was the prior superintendent who ordered those and all that, so I can reach into it and kind of look and see, because they were nice when they were working. And, uh, you know, I looked through Chesterton and all that, theirs is always working and all that, so I don't know why those stop signs just.
Yeah, and it's, they're not shady, you know, it's not shady there.
No, and if one in the right direction south, there shouldn't be no issues.
Hmm. So many figures.
All right, respondents?
Yeah, you have on for origination, E P A Cleveland Cliffs, and I D A M, Indiana Fleet Service, New Drive His Company, and S M S Build Services.
Any queue? All right, um, twenty twenty six budget.
Okay, so all of the budget numbers are loaded into Gateway. We're good to go. The only thing that needs to be entered before we click the button to submit is I need to know the two dates, i.e. we need to know the first reading and the adoption date. We originally planned to do the adoption at the October eighth council meeting. You have to have ten days of notice in order to, uh, to have the meeting. So what I need from you is just a date when you wanna have it, that's ten days after tomorrow. Get it published.
Do you before you want to check this date?
I didn't, I don't have verification, but it's gonna be published and it'll be published tomorrow on Gateway.
Right.
So we had originally thrown around in discussions, September the twenty fourth, twenty fifth, or twenty sixth. The, the twenty fourth gives you, that's thirteen days, um, which would be, you know, well in advance up to ten. The twenty sixth gives you fifteen days notice. And both of those are before, uh, twenty fourth, twenty fifth, twenty sixth are more than ten days prior to October.
Who wants to pick a date?
I would just say Wednesday, the twenty fourth, just cause Wednesday is.
I was just gonna say, I'm not available that day. I mean, if everybody else is available, that's cool with me, but I'm not available on Wednesday, the twenty fourth. I would be available on Thursday, the twenty fifth, or Friday, the twenty sixth, then not available on Wednesday. So whatever you guys, if you guys know me, I'm Wednesday, I'm there.
I can, I can, I can do that, I have those dates.
What date, when was speaking about? September twenty fourth, twenty fifth, or twenty sixth.
I can do the twenty fourth or the twenty fifth. She doesn't have to be here, right? We have.
It's only two have a court.
Yeah.
It's been fine. Sorry.
I'm just saying, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so can we say the twenty fourth? Could, could three of us be here on the twenty fourth at what time would be like?
Yes, yes. Um. I wouldn't do it earlier than six because it is the hearing for the budget, so the public may want to come.
So let's just do seven then?
If, whatever you choose, I can hear, um, but I'm just saying, because it's, you know, an opportunity for the public to come for the budget, I would wanna make sure people are available.
Let's do seven.
September twenty, September twenty fourth at seven P M.
Twenty fourth.
So make sure you're all of these. So Lisa, Jada, and me have to be here.
Yes.
But we're here.
We're there massive pool.
So I can't impress upon you enough, if one of the three of you doesn't show up and we miss this date, we'll have to have a second special meeting after the October eighth council meeting in order to wrap.
Correct.
Not a huge deal, but a witness has to attend a second meeting. So nine twenty four, seven P M. And then adoption is October eighth at the council meeting.
If anything were to happen and I needed to meet to zoom, we could do that.
You need to have.
It says.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, you have to have a recording person.
Yeah, I'm in Philadelphia, of course.
I will be here. I will be here.
Okay.
All right, um, just a couple of questions on the budget though, Nick. Have you heard anything on Cliffs appeal?
I'll make sure that's. I have not, nothing.
Okay. And then do, are, are you able, maybe not now, but when, before we adopt to have some information, are we losing any money doing tax caps this year?
We are, I have it.
Okay, no, it may be at our budget hearing, we can share that and then.
Yeah, we went through that with Tina at our budget workshop.
Okay, and then, yeah, I would like to know that. And then any impact of Senate Bill one that you might be able to share with us that would be, you know, important, does that maybe do, does that maybe go with me as well next time?
Thank you. Stat anniversary, um, Joel Scherl, two years, and Mike Busciano for three years. All right. Um, new business, number two, brainstorm computer quote, but I believe they've been delivered.
So it already, well, this is a different one. Oh, this is different. This is.
Oh, that's for all the ones.
They're, right, so we need to replace eleven computers that are not able to be upgraded to Windows eleven. And um, we can't stay on Windows ten if they are connected to the internet because if they will not continue to receive security updates. So I did talk to all of the departments and based on the list that Brainstorm provided of those that could not update, everyone said they do need them. Uh, it's yours is one of them. Uh, there's five in the fire department, four in the police department, and one in the street department that need to be upgraded. So Mark did provide me a quote. Uh, it would cost um uh per computer. Sorry, I think it was like a thousand forty-two dollars, which involves a purchase and installation um of those. And so I would um make a motion to accept that quote for eleven, sorry, I'll give the exact number. Eleven computers and for those to be paid from um C C D or lit um equipment. Let me get the exact number, sorry. The other ones, I don't know what.
What did you say the amount was? I'm sorry.
I'm, you know what, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the quote. I'm just waiting for it to load. All right, I'll let down one of it. Did you send it to us, Tony?
Well, it's in the shared drive. One thousand forty-two dollars and nineteen cents per computer, so my motion would be for eleven thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and nine cents from lit equipment.
Second.
And he assured us that they will be up and running before the October deadline. Discussion?
Roll call.
All in favor?
I agree.
I agree.
Opposed? Have sentience? While we're on the topic of Brainstorm, just to, there was an email communication this weekend that Brainstorm was saying that they have not been paid. We verified that checks were sent in July and August, and that the September checks are ready to go out pending your approval later this evening. We think this is a situation like.
Yeah, it took me a month before I got a check.
That's cause so.
So.
Like we're sending them US mail, um it's taking.
And we said, yes. Yes.
Are we having mail picked up here or are you taking it to post office?
So. Yes, they have to pick it up. So we can, I I called Mark twice today. I didn't get him either time. The the checks are cut, so we have to either figure out, do they need to go look? Did they are they on, are they in a mail room somewhere at Brainstorm, or did they not get delivered? And if they're saying that they're lost, we need to go to Horizon, cancel those checks and cut new checks, and we can sort of make you that. So as far as I know, i- if anybody doubted saying, no, ours is is current, um everything is current. So if anybody's saying that they're not, if they don't have it, it's the check is lost in the mail. I I have no idea how to explain it other than I'm hearing we're not the only ones, not not municipalities, but other businesses are not, are not getting mail, so.
I know, that's why I asked that question, because a lot of people have stopped like businesses have, as far as I've, have stopped the mail pickup and have gone straight directly to the post office to drop their mail.
And, oh, maybe that's some, I'm happy to do that, so.
So they know it's a payment.
Especially for checks.
But if it will.
You want, we go to Horizon Bank right there, so it's not like it's a.
But if it would be, if it would be helpful.
Well, let me, since you're talking, let me ask about this. Have you thought about direct payments? Because some of my other government clients with the county, they have my, they have my bank kind of information and it just.
Like just.
Like a direct deposit?
Yeah, it just swept. And I, and I'm not saying that I want that, you know, for me, you know, if you might have other
Oh, I know.
people who get paid e- every month, and maybe you don't have a Menards bill or other bills every month, but it's gonna save in some administrative costs. I know checks cost money, and there's posted alone.
On top of going and canceling them too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, is, and and we are allowed to pay that way. I, and I could be incorrect, but I believe that a previous treasurer said that they all had to do like handwritten checks, if there wasn't, you had, you were restricted on the way that you could pay things A C H.
I'll buy, I'll buy them, I'll get them.
Yeah.
Please.
Did you wanna say something else?
No, I have more information.
Okay. All right. Fires or do we need to have another Brainstorm quote? Or?
Well, I had originally emailed Maddie about these computers that we were getting, but Brainstorm must have seen, I'm assuming, the meeting minutes where we had approved them. We approved getting these computers, did we not?
Yeah.
You did.
But only three.
And they brought.
And they brought five. We approved that at the last, the last meeting, correct? That's what I thought. Okay, 'cause I told him we only needed three, and I'm going to email him again and see what he says about it. 'Cause I know Tony, I didn't talk to them, and you said you didn't talk to them.
Not about that, so I don't know.
So I don't know if he just figured one lump sum of, he was already coming to do the computers that him and Tony had talked about.
It's for some reason he can't take them back, I don't know.
The only advantage we have to these is they are already all set up. We can, I can send some to the printer right now and it'll print. Like they print, they set up everything for these that they can be made in the office, so if you want to print something from this printer, you can send it directly there.
You can randomly print things in your office during the day?
Lovely.
Um.
I got a story on that later. You don't have a printer in your office anymore.
I don't. I just wanted to, I mean, everybody can use it now. It's better. It's fine.
Nick app had mentioned past week if he could use one, if we're not gonna use all five, and if their Brainstorm's not gonna take them back, could take one home?
Yeah, if you guys are gonna, if you, if you guys can get two of them returned, please, return the two.
Okay.
But if it's a hard no, and we're stuck with two, I'll take one.
Okay.
Right?
Could it be also used if we cannot return them for potential, if Jill ever needs one and something happens to hers or can she see?
She just got, I think she just took one.
She just.
Yeah, she's using the extra one that we got for this room that wasn't needed.
Right. Or if we had the extra two, then do we change this?
I mean.
Or is that not the same computer?
I think those are different.
Okay.
I mean, those are like desktop computers that we just.
All the ones that are expiring for us are all desktops.
Oh. All right, um, buyer service contract.
So I just put this on here. Um, the Incorp had sent over their contract, and I had asked Clay to look at it. It's just uh changing numbers. Um, it's coming up in, I think we always approve it in November because the first payment is December, so just so it's on our radar, I'll make sure you all have it and.
I think we all have it, right?
We should, it should be in the, yeah, so it doesn't necessarily need approval tonight, but read through it. I know what budgets we discussed. Should they have like, you know, a limit on the number? I mean, this is their contract that they give us for buyer services.
So you want this on October then?
Yeah, it can be. I mean, I would read through it. If there's any questions, I think, like I said, we are for, our payment's due in December, I believe, so I don't know if it's the following here, though. We, I think we've, in the past, we've approved it in November.
Okay. All right, um, surplus items?
So I only have.
So are you, you're, are you talking about the bids, Nick?
Yeah.
So the surplus items that we put on there, Jeremy helped me go through the back office. There's two printers in the main space here. There's some of the old equipment that we used prior to setting up this room that isn't inventoried in the town, but it's not something we're using anymore. So it's surplus that we don't need to keep. I don't know what we wanna do with it. There's a couple of computers that we can just remove the hard drives and then re- recycle the rest, but I wanted it to be known in a meeting that there's these things and what do we wanna do with it.
And I have the two thousand nine Ford F two fifty Super Duty with Western Paw package and the nineteen ninety-seven Patton generator with no transfer switch or any other hookups. So I just need a final list.
Those two are your list for the closed bids.
Okay, and there's not, but you just mentioned other things. Those are just for scrapping or or whatever. So that's my question. These two items are the only two. So I have, so the process is I advertise, we have to advertise twice uh what the items are, and I propose that we open the dates on October eighth. Or the November meeting, it's your, it's your choice.
Is October eighth enough time?
Yeah, we have to advertise twice.
And one has a plow, so we probably wanna try to get it out there sooner than later.
Give it advertised twice, s- twice, seven days apart, and seven days before you open the bits.
Okay.
So.
Now, if people wanna come look at it, do I show them the stuff?
Yeah.
I mean, whenever.
In my advertisement, can you put like the hours or to contact Brandon since it's both of his things and then they can?
'Cause it's just for the truck and the generator, still direct.
Yeah, seven, three, Monday through Friday, they can come on out and someone will show them.
Take care of it tomorrow.
Okay.
And then is anyone opposed? I, I mean, we can recycle the surplus if someone staff wants it. I, I mean, it's two printers that are really big. I don't know if they still work.
Is it something like, is it something that we're able to like post online that we have if somebody wants it?
I don't know how that works, because I mean, it's been sitting in the back room and.
Oh.
Yeah.
Or it's big garbage they pick up.
So. Is it something that we would want? Well, those are electronics, so we can, don't want those in the, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Man, they can be recycled on twelve or.
Yeah.
I mean, if we just like set them on the curb, just give them. Is it one of those kind of things or?
We can take the hard drives out, destroy them and recycle them over there.
Right. There, but that, the old system with the video thing and the, you know, that we used to use for the meetings in here is in there also.
The black box is out of the wall here.
And the big box that was on the wall, but I don't know that that has any value. It probably just needs to be, those things recycled. The printers that maybe their staff that would want something, I don't know, and then pitch it. We could put it out to the town employees and say, there's a few things.
If they want it.
That's up, that's up to the fire department.
Is anyone opposed to that? Like there's a couple printers, there's a monitor and a keyboard. I don't know.
No. I'd say put it out on email and see if anybody wants it.
Okay, otherwise we'll get it recycled.
Or as well. Correct.
I can send that email to Mark.
All right, um, approval of financial reports, the fund report, ratio report, and a revenue report that was sent to us.
So just to clarify, the old school financial report, we're gonna get back to that format next month. It's, that format is just a condensed version of these three reports that are pulled out of uh by Brainstorm.
And this is, these reports are, we've closed out through July now?
Correct.
Okay. Approve the financial reports?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Have sentience? Thank you.
Approval of the vouchers with your own signatures?
Some.
Second, but I have a question.
Discussion.
The, there's three in there that say Horizon account service fee. What is that service fee for? There's three bills, one every month we get one.
I have to look at the invoice.
Okay. And are, are the department heads receiving the claim book and enough time to review it and sign it prior to the meeting?
I don't joke in that.
Ryan was here when I got here.
Okay, 'cause I don't know that everyone, it didn't look like it was signed by everyone. And then are we not separating things into claim, different claim books? 'Cause there's park in this one and there's wastewater and town.
We talked about, we talked about doing that. I'm pretty sure that it's done next.
I'm just asking, 'cause we had, um.
We had talked about it.
I know we're still gonna have a front to frontier bill because we have the lift stations, but do you know if we closed the line that had the nineteen that was the bone tree that rolled over? 'Cause we don't need to.
I'm sure we talked about that. Let me verify.
Okay, because I mean, it was a substantial amount for nineteen lines that we don't need. And then I saw the bill in there for the animal control services. Do we need to approve a contract for that every year? I feel like there was a, it's a two thousand dollar bill for, and I know what it's for.
They normally send something out.
I know, I saw the bill in there tonight. I was like, I don't remember seeing a contract.
I don't think I didn't get a contract. I'll call tomorrow.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't had anything come through, but my understanding is, I think from the past, I don't know what the duration was, but they would assess what it is, and that's what it would be for several years, and then it got reassessed.
Okay, and I don't know the.
Based on calls for service and things like that, so I don't know where it's at though, 'cause I don't remember in my three years having to call.
Or can we see, see where the last one that was signed is, and maybe it is for so many years, I, I did, 'cause two thousand, I feel like we paid that same amount for a long, long time, but
Right.
I just saw it and then I was like, oh, I don't remember seeing that.
Thanks. Any other discussions? Roll call.
All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Have sentience?
Epstein.
Approval of purchase orders submitted with three more signatures.
We don't have any in there.
No.
I didn't see any.
I didn't know it was not on the table.
All of Ryan's were from last month?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, old business, um, the effective date of the new building fees, do you?
November twenty sixth.
Okay. Um, end that invoice eight nine five five four.
So this is old business number two, uh as you just said, um seventy-six thousand ten dollars and seventy-one cents.
What was it again? I'm sorry.
Seventy-six zero one zero point seven one.
What's this for?
This is C C M G repayment for twenty twenty-three.
Didn't we already approve to repay?
We did something last month.
Uh, last month.
We transferred the money in from one account into another last month, and now we have the invoice, so I need approval to pay.
I'll make a motion to pay the end that invoice eight nine five five four in the amount of seventy-six thousand ten dollars and seventy-one cents.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
All in favor?
Um.
Opposed? Have sentience?
All right, number three, dive truck proposal, Ryan's not.
Ryan is not here, so we will move that to.
They will.
Oh, I, I think, I, I wanna approve it.
Oh.
I mean, they, they, they're replacing the part. He was, they were changing the oil the other night, if it ran fine.
Okay.
Not, like there were no other problems based on what he said.
I didn't know he was gonna bring something else back to us.
Oh, no, I think this was, we would just accepted his, like that whole package he is.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the only cost that's going to be needed is the cost for the wrap and to remove the um design. Otherwise, they'll do it all themselves. So I would make a motion to approve that dive truck proposal. Um, and I had discussed with him, um potentially if, if he had money at the end of the year to encumber that, to pay for that. Um, otherwise, I mean, I think this would be an expense that would, would be a CCD or something like that.
Well, I feel like it's going- Going to help us in the long run.
Yeah, my only question for Nick was we, we decommissioned it, so we need to recommission it and then change-
And reinsure it.
and reinsure it when it's ready to go, so I don't know how that works, but I would make a motion and then may I start working on the dive truck.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Thank you.
Alright. Um, we're, number four, we've already talked about the PMS plant process.
We did.
Number five, PBS chemicals noise complaints.
So Jeremy and I got together once we're working on, uh, coming up with the, some ideas for a, uh, draft for a new possible ordinance to bring for plant emission.
Okay. Have you heard any more from them, though, they were gonna come last month, right, and then they didn't?
Yeah.
We haven't heard any more, any more complaints?
No. Uh, so far, no.
Okay. And closed bed items we just discussed, um, just like we did in October eighth.
Yeah, we did, and I have my notes, uh, are, that we're gonna publish on nine sixteen and nine twenty-four for the ten eighth, um.
Alright, and then Republic Trash Recycling Contract Renewal, have you heard from them?
I have, so, uh, David Arroyo is our new rep, Jim Metros is no longer, he's still with Republic, he's no longer covering our account. So I did speak with David, um, I'll say it was my, my skill, my sales skills, my great negotiating skills, but I, I flippantly asked him if there was any way that we could get a discount and he said yes, probably. So based on our long-term relationship with them. So we, we looked at the existing contract, it has two years left on it. He was gonna go back to his management and discuss what it would look like to discount those final two years and then come to a mutual, a mutual agreement at a lower price. I said, okay, I'd love to, I'm sure, I'm sure the residents would appreciate, uh, a lower trash services bill for twenty twenty-six. Uh, if he's not able to do that, uh, he's gonna try to get permission to agree to the, uh, the mutual agreement of the last two years. Um, and that's why I approved him. Very late last week, have not approved him since, called him yesterday and today, didn't get a good answer. Um, but we need to, I'm, I'm gonna keep pressing him because we've got, uh, like the books are ready to print for twenty twenty-six.
Right.
We're just waiting for that final number, so we need to-
And if we roll into those last two, we don't need to go out for bid for anything?
We don't, we have-
We just accept that.
Correct, so we have an existing contract, years four, year, I'm sorry, years three and four were agreed to. One and two were set, three and four were by mutual agreement, five and six were by mutual agreement. So all we have to do is get them to agree at the, to a price, we don't have to go out for bid. If we end up going out for bid, we'd have to go seek three. But you get updated and if I hear from all you know, you just, like, send until October.
Hmm, sounds great.
Sure.
Alright, Gary, I've stopped down application number three, um, I, they still not received, Lola's still not received the closeout document.
Yeah, definitely.
So that needs to get tabled again till October. Alright, and then last is the sanitation board appointment. Um, unfortunately, I only received one applicant. Um, Dana?
So I, this is for Gordon McCormick.
Yeah. I, I, uh, reached out to Gordon and asked, uh, to fill Alan's seat, if he would be available to fill Alan's seat on storm and sanitation. And he is, so. I make a motion to appoint Gordon McCormick to storm sanitat- and sanitation to fill out the term till twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-six.
Second, are we certain that it's a council appointment or is it present?
I looked, it's a council, I already looked.
It's council, I, I can just make, just making sure.
Roll call, are you ready?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Absentions? Thank you, congratulations to Gordon.
Okay, go to order.
Just one thing I wanted to bring up, um, the coupon book that goes out for the sanitation that goes out every year at the beginning of the year,
Yeah.
is it possible that we can possibly get together, people on this board or whatever, to send along with that? Because mailing has always been an issue in trying to get information out to the residents of this town. Is there a way that we could possibly put information in with that coupon book? Like for instance, a calendar of the year, when the meetings are and that, I know that it's posted on the website all the time, but majority of our demographics in this town, they don't go on the website. I'm just trying to get information out there to the, to the residents. And also too, maybe a little word from the street building departments to send out, you know, when they're gonna do certain, I know, again, this is all posted on the website, but this is an opportunity for us to put this information into a complete packet that we have to mail out the coupon book anyway.
In the Facebook.
This way we're informing it and then when residents do come and say, well, I didn't know about that, it was mailed to you, you know, at the beginning of the year.
But it's also posted three other places and I understand that some people don't look at the internet or, I feel like mail and then we're incurring more fees and that's more work on you that we have to put all the things, when if you come in here to pay your bill, there is a literal schedule you can ask for. It's printed, sitting there right there for you, all you have to do is ask for any of the schedules. So in my opinion, I don't think we need to add more to it, that's just more printing, more ink, more money that we are sending.
You could maybe just have a notice that Town Council meets on the second Wednesday of the month at seven RDC and just say, these are the normal schedules, any further information, here's the phone number, here's the website, here's, here's all of the-
Just refer to, yes.
Here's the elected officials' emails.
And we have done that in the past, I mean, it's been extensive and then it's just been, you know, simple information, um-
Then, that's why, I mean, this mailing has to go out with the coupon book anyway, so what's it gonna take to add?
To me, I, I know I could go straight to my recycle, like, I don't, it's-
That would be us, but I'm talking, and that's not me, but I, I mean, talking to residents that I constantly, every resident in my area is a senior citizen, they don't have access to websites, they don't have Facebook. I, I'm just reaching out to this council, trying to get a better communications with the people. And, and, and while I'm speaking of that, it's, look at the town picnic, we just had it. We had twenty, I think it was twenty-seven people we come in, um, that came out to the picnic and they were-
There is definitely a disconnect, we, the town is not, um, coming together. So we need to bring them together, I think it's essential.
And I think this is an opportunity, we have to mail this booklet out anyway, what is it gonna take to put something else together to put into that booklet, that's all I'm asking.
It would take a, a listing of whatever the five of you want us to put in there, formatted under town letterhead, folded twice and just slipped into the envelope. But it's, I acted, you're disoriented, you're direction and discretion, so you tell me what you want me to put in it and I'm happy to-
Okay.
And when do you need to have that list, when does it need to go out?
Well, I mean, we're not, we've gotta figure out the trash services contract that probably won't be ready to sign until October,
We gotta figure out when.
So we have, we have a month for you guys to come up at least with a list of what do you want in there, you wanna do what Clay said and just do, here's the meetings, here's the, you know, we're gonna continue picking up rush on Mondays.
Jack, can you check with those residents that you know that are saying that they're not having that and ask them what they would like to see in there and then what's-
That's what I'm saying, well, what they would like to see would be when the meetings are.
Okay, can you email, can you put that together in the email, um, and then we'll start to fill up, you know, we're gonna need to start building a list from there.
Okay, sure. Absolutely.
Cause someone's gotta, you know, start to put it together.
So do you guys wanna do, and when does it have to be done by?
By the next meeting.
I would say by the actual rate meeting, only because I'm hoping that you guys would be approving mutual agreement on the, on the trash services contract at that date.
Okay. Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I got, I got a question, on the correspondence from Encore, does anybody know what that entails, the installation of an energy storage system? Does anybody have any more information on that?
Where is Encore?
The Encore origination part of the correspondence is-
What's the address of it, do you have that in the question?
There, there's, uh-
Oh.
I just gave it to her.
Yeah, okay, the, the property parcel on question, that's the entirety of the bike shop, just so you guys know.
This is the right, if they're interested in-
Okay. But further, in the future, we need to, before a motion is made, there was a motion on the table to adjourn, so that's okay, roll, before.
But I was just, wanted, you had to act faster than I could say it, so.
So the, it looks like we need to respond to this. Is that, did you, did you read it, Nick? The Encore?
I believe that was passed down.
Yeah, so this is-
I mean, it's, it, yes, it's correspondence, but they're asking me to lease the property. They're interested in leasing or purchasing space on our property. So I guess if you don't acknowledge it, then it's a no, I don't know if it's-
Do you guys wanna do?
What would you say, Nick?
It's up to the five of you. Do you wanna respond to it or, I would, if you're asking my opinion, I would say you need Clay to respond to it if any of you are going to.
I don't believe it, I've seen this letter that you're talking about.
I have only seen it, it was passed down the table. The part of the, our correspondence for tonight's meeting, I am sure.
I don't think we respond to it, I mean, this entails all along the path, you know, we're doing something, renting, leasing property all along the entire path that we just took care of and there's not a whole lot of information about this, I just, I think just-
I mean, I would just point out the last sentence, if you're interested in more info or receiving a proposal, please call and or email. So if you don't respond, we are not interested. And that was mailed six weeks ago and if they haven't knocked on your door or sent you an email or called you or put something else in your mailbox, you're not interested. We've got plenty of stuff to do, it's almost nine o'clock.
Thank you.
I do have, we need a new motion.
We need a motion, we need somebody to motion to adjourn, it's still up there.
Oh. Second, okay. Roll call please.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Thank you. Okay, adjourned at eight fifty-four.
That's trash, I'll be to that higher.